Okay. We will call together, I will call, excuse me, call to order the first public hearing, scheduled for 5:30 for the purpose of receiving public input for consideration of a First Amendment to the inter-ministerial agreement between the City of Waterbury and the Town of Nogatuck for development of properties in Nogatuck and Waterbury, as submitted by Paul K. Apron-Ruski, Jr., city, uh, water, uh, Mayor, City of Waterbury. Uh, if you wish to speak on this topic only, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff, Steve Conway. You'll have five minutes to speak about this topic. Please state your name and address for the record. Mr. Conway.
First speaker from 45 Pierce Street, Sharon Samaska.
Before I speak, could someone reiterate for us what the amendment is, please?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Before I speak, could you reiterate what this amendment is? Because that's not what I was...
So, this is just the agreement between Waterbury and Nogatuck. It's the agreement to, uh, for the development itself.
Okay, alright. I will speak to that. My feeling at this point in time is I'm not against this, but neither am I for it. I'm concerned about our economic climate. I'm concerned at this point with going forward when we are seeing businesses and manufacturers closing down, not knowing if they're going to be able to get supplies or not, and even if they get them, how are they going to use them? Is this going to be a more difficult situation for us? Is it better to wait, perhaps? Or say that, yeah, we'll have the amendment, but all this does is basically say we're going to agree to work together. If that's what it is, I agree with that. I am really concerned about the fact of what going forward right now means to anybody. If you get things that you can't use, it's going to be a building that's sitting there and is one of the most massive buildings that's ever been built in this city. So, I would just ask for clarity, along with the fact that there are many issues that I don't know have been resolved at this point in time, including traffic, including pollution, including the bridge over Platts Mill, uh, from Platts Mill Road to Bristol Street, which we know has to be, I believe, replaced is what they told us last summer. There are endless potholes on that bridge every day. I don't know how it would substantiate and hold truck traffic. So, those are some of my concerns about going forward. Let's be very careful what we do. We don't want another Waterbury hospital with a building and land and what are we going to do with it? And what we thought would happen, which would be really good for the city, turns out to be not good for the city at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
Okay. With that, we will close this public hearing and we will start our budget public hearing at, uh, 5:40 to schedule time. Thank you. Oh, is it? No, it's, it's 5:45?
It's 5:40, right?
I think it's 5:40. Yeah, it's supposed to be 5:40, right?
5:40.
5:40, right, yeah. Okay. We will call to order a first budget public hearing, scheduled for 5:40 in these chambers, for the purpose of soliciting public input with respect to the mayor's proposed, uh, 26, uh, 2026 year bud, 2025-2026 year budget. Uh, if you wish to address this board on this topic only, I ask that you sign up with our, uh, City Sheriff, uh, Steve Conway. You will have a 15-minute time limit. I will give you a one-minute warning. Please state your name and address for the record. Uh, Mr. Conway.
First speaker tonight from 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. Seemed like this is deja vu. I'm here over and over again and it seemed like nobody seems to care to come to these meetings. I don't understand. You know, even in my neighborhood, the people come up to me and they say, "Why can't we get more involved in our government?" And yet, no, people aren't here and I don't understand. I mean, you think about what our veterans fought for. I know I got an open mic here, but I just think it's, it's very sad to see that you have people in the general public that will not come down here to speak whether in favor of the budget or not in favor of the budget. And I, I just really wish more people would show up and, and come to these meetings and I hopefully they're watching on TV and maybe someday they will. I pray to God they do. Okay. I would like to voice my opinion on the new budget for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. Some people say it's a fair and honest balanced budget. Others say more can be done. Nobody likes taxes, especially those living on fixed income, who struggle each and every day of their lives with no other needed expenses, with many other needed expenses when, you know, when can we, uh, have the stakeholders get an even break? When can the stakeholders get an even break? I'm sorry about that. There's no easy answer for any of us, regardless of what your income may be. Maybe we have far too much government in our lives, cutting costs and expenditures may be the answer in the near future. Case in point, why can't we itemize our expenditures, not just during the budget transactions, but throughout the entire year, looking for any savings, large or small? Maybe we should be looking for other possible revenues, like a commuter tax for those who work for the city or whatever, but don't reside here, have it based on their income. City-owned vehicles, why can't some people use their own vehicles for transportation, especially when they are off the clock? To do this, to this date, no one wants to address this issue, this subject, obviously. It is too much to ask, why can't you own, you know, have your own vehicles when you're returning home? Use your own vehicles. Don't get me wrong, I'm not referring to emergency department vehicles like police, fire, first responders. I realize we need some form of transportation each and every day. More taxes on the residents who only form a transportation, either trucks, cars, motorcycles, yes, even boats, when you're on the lake trying to enjoy the day, can be very rewarding, if, if you can enjoy the day. And I'm not saying that to be disrespectful, just that I know people that go out and they go on vacation, they want to do a lot of different things, and they just can't do it because they have to work two or three jobs, just to pay their bills, and we're one of them. Many renters, including Karen and me, make up 60% of the current population. Why is that? Is it because we can no longer, can no longer afford a home, forcing us to sell our home because of the burden of high taxes and other needed expenses? Please take note. We wanted to keep our home, the first home we ever bought when the kids were little. Now, we're back to renting, and that's very sad. If, okay, if we are going to help grow the grain list, then we must have some compassion for local businesses whom employ many workers. Remember, they are the true backbone of our economy, especially when we deal with taxes imposed on them like fixtures and any other taxable items they may have. Education makes up the largest budget expenditures, even though we're subsidized by the state's contributions every year to this date. Now, we have many new immigrants in our city, including undocumented, living and working here, children attending our schools. Questions, are these parents paying their fair share of taxes? To make things fair for all Waterbury residents, find other ways to get more revenue to city coffers, like cutting unnecessary spending, selling city assets like vehicles and property. In closing, I would personally like to thank the mayor and others who are deeply involved in this budget process, including members of the Board of Alderman and the committees, especially working on the, the best budget they feel that works well with all city taxpayers for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. But more needs to be done in the near future. Okay. I'm not, I'm not naive. I'm, I understand, we as Americans have to all tighten our belts, especially with the current atmosphere in Washington, DC, regardless how you may feel about President Trump. I believe that this is something we all have to work on, and we all got to stop pointing the fingers at each other as Republicans, Democrats, independents, whatever. You know, we're city residents, we're American citizens, and we got to work with the mayor and work with, uh, the, the budget director and, and everybody else and include, uh, you know, uh, everybody that's in this room and Michael LeBlanc, which I admire very much. I think he does a phenomenal job. And all you members of the Board of Alderman, I think you're doing the very best you can. But I really wish, again, to go back to my original statement, I wish more people would come down here and speak, you know, their, their opinion, voice their opinion, because, you know, nobody's going to come down here and attack you. And as a vet, a friend of mine who's a veteran said, I don't want to mention the name, he said, "Martin, you got an open mic down here. You have every right to come down here and speak." And I'm not denying that, I understand. But you see what's going on in the rest of the world, what's going on in the country, and, you know, people aren't happy with a lot of things. So, hopefully, we can all come together for the betterment of all American citizens. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Okay, with that, we will close this public hearing and we will start our normal meeting at the Board of Alderman at 6:00 PM. Okay. We will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen scheduled for Monday, April 7th, 2025. If everybody would please rise for the Pledge Allegiance and a silent prayer.
I know he's here. Alderman Elsev. Alderman Dorso. Alderwoman Caballo.
Present.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy. Alderman Newjame. Alderman Rinaldi. Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Taladine.
Present.
Alderwoman Weaver. Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman D.G. Ovencarlo.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Okay, we have a quorum, and just for the record, Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy was not feeling well, and she was unable to make the meeting. With that, next item on our agenda is public speaking. If you wish to address this board, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff, Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway.
First speaker tonight from 45 Pear Street, Sharon Samaska.
Sharon Samaska, 45 Pear Street in our city. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here and to speak to you in a country that's making it kind of difficult. I have four quick concerns, and then I want to share something with you. One is the train overpass on Bristol Street. The road is still being closed. Don't know why. In an environmental issue but a garbage issue, on Bristol Street, I have been calling for about a month. Across from the Bristol Babcock factory, someone has been dumping big items in one of those little kind of driveway areas with the fence on it. Nobody seems to know what to do, and the garbage remains. So hopefully, somebody can do something. I would also say I am very concerned for our veterans, of which my husband is one. I pray and I hope that somehow, between the city and our representatives to Hartford who are here, that we will fight strongly to keep our vets protected. And I stand here before you, and I tell you that my husband was exposed to Agent Orange, and I tell you that because of that, his life will be affected forever. And that is why I do not, we do not, have a child. So please, please, don't think that this is nothing. It is real. It is big, and it is going to cause serious harm. The second part of what I want to talk to you about is a post on Facebook that I saw last night, and I responded to it, as did over 300 other people. It was a post that said, "Hey, y'all, what do you hate about Waterbury?" And you know I was going to jump on that one, and I did. And so did several other people. Looking cursorily at it quickly, I find there are themes: garbage, speeding, treatment, where do people go, what do they do? And I found many people in that 300 number so far who said, "Stop it. We need to talk about what's good, too." This was my response. Hate is a very strong word and seldom brings a good outcome. Yes, there are problems here, but is there any city without them? Could this statement be more realistic and encouraging if it sought what is good and what is not so good? How would you address the issues to move us forward and not let the negative overpower the good? Life is at times like a scale, showing us that the world we live in is imperfect, and negative happens, but do we let it win? Negative breeds negativity and roadblocks. A positive approach for change of the negative initiates what's better. People don't agree on many things, but teamwork is the way that we change, and it's the way that we make a difference. Would it not be far more positive to bring issues and concerns to our departments, our commissions, our boards, our Board of Aldermen, our senators, and our representatives? Problems cannot be fixed without getting facts, which to me is a critical problem. We have a very, very deficient ability to find the facts. We have to take the facts to the right place and secure answers for the right sources. No voice is too small, and no voice should be ignored. To this, I add, is this worth a review? With 300 statements that were made, and that post apparently has been taken down, but maybe it's worth a glance. Maybe it's worth a look to see, is there a thread here? What can we do about it? I would also seek, is it possible for our administration, our departments in this city, to perhaps once a month, or maybe every other week, take a topic? Roads. How are we fixing them? Train tracks. What do we do? Garbage. Who's on it? Because people honestly don't know. They don't know you. In my neighborhood, if I go around to all the houses, I would bet you that maybe five people out of 15 would know who our representative for this area is. It seems there's no meeting with us.
One minute.
I would suggest that we set up a meeting on a regular basis to answer questions, to guide people. That's the way we're going to create a positivity in this city, not the negativity of the trashing of the city. Yes, there are problems, but yes, there are solutions. Yes, there are people who fight, but we need to fight and work together in a team in order to make it work. I am very upset when so many people tell me our Board of Aldermen is useless. Yet here I stand. I don't think you're useless. I don't always know what you can do, but neither do our residents. So let's get the information out there. Let's help everybody know, so that when you have a post like this, it will make some kind of sense. Thank you for speaking, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Next speaker, 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
Again, Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. I just have to apologize for not getting here on time for the public hearing. I wasn't really ready for it, but for the purpose of receiving public input, for consideration, First Amendment intermunicipal agreement between the City of Waterbury and the town of Nogatuck for development properties in Nogatuck and Waterbury, as submitted by our mayor. The thing, I understand that this is something, and I do support Amazon coming in here. I think it's good. I think it's good because they're going to be able to create a lot of good jobs, excuse me, and grow the grand list, and that's something we really need in Waterbury. That's something that I know a lot of people would look forward to. It's a positive injection, if you will, of goodness for the citizens of City Waterbury, and that's something I think that we should look forward to. Also, the other thing, as far as the amendment and everything else that's coming up, because I had this handed to me from one of the members of the Board of Aldermen. I didn't get a chance to read the whole thing, but basically, I think it's an agreement about if there's, once a building's constructed and built, they're going to have a decision of who's going to be taking care of, what side with the fire department, who's going to respond for emergency and everything else. I guess it's going to be like just a split building, and it's going to be, one half is going to be, if I understand it right, one half is going to be taken care of by the borough of Nogatuck, and the other half is going to be taken by the City of Waterbury. So that's something you guys have to digest and look into and see exactly what's going on with that. Because to me, whenever you have anything, a situation like that, especially emergency, I think all first responders should respond, regardless of what side of the road you're on. That's how I feel. Also, I did want to say, being out there in the Hamilton Park, because I know we have something coming up with the Stone House coming up, and I want to thank Alderman Jack Elsev, and I'm on the committee. We're doing everything we can to have rededication in Stone House, and I think that's great because Hamilton Park is a beautiful place, and we got a beautiful swimming pool there, a nice facility. I remember when I was a kid, we used to go skating down there and everything and go down to the parkhouse. I remember doing plays down here, too, a long time ago with the current players. That was quite a long time ago. Anyways, I think it's great that we've seen a lot of positive things happening in Waterbury, and especially in Waterville Park. There's a lot of great things happening. We got new play skate, as you guys know. We got the sprinkler for the kids. We got the baseball park. We got the new benches. We got the new restroom there, and I placed a lot of that information on Facebook. And there's so many other things, a basketball court, and I guess the tennis courts are still working on that, but just a lot of good, positive things. I know when you go up around the park up there and you go up to where Boyd Street Extension is, there's brand-new wall there, or something, somebody put the brand-new fence there, and I appreciate that. I took some pictures of it. Matter of fact, Karen and I, we went by and we looked at it, and we said, "Wow, this is awesome," you know? So it's long overdue, and, you know, I'm just glad and happy to see that things are looking up in Waterbury, and I want to thank the mayor and his administration, and many of you folks on the members of the Board of Aldermen, the various districts. Because I know a lot of other parks are going, you know, looking a lot better in Washington Park, too. That's looking really good, along with Hamilton Park, Waterville, Bucksville. A lot of parks are looking good. And by the way, I want to say I'm very happy to see that we have a new police officer in Waterville, and, you know, Officer Moffett. And I know we had Officer Kelly, and I know D.G. was a community police officer for a long time. So I'm happy to see in Waterville that we have a lot of positive things going on, and we have a lot of good communication coming back and forth.
One minute.
I know. We have a lot of good communication coming back and forth with the police department and the fire department. And by the way, I want to thank the fire department for letting us have this day and give us the opportunity to have our meetings at the old Waterville Firehouse. I think it's great. And, you know, it doesn't matter, you're Republican, Democrat, independent. What matters is that we're all American citizens, and I say this time and time again, we should all be there for each other and help each other in every way and aspect we can, and I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Okay. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the Monday, March 24th, 2025, public hearing and regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Alderwoman Weaver?
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Ayes have it. The motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Mayor?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just want to take a moment to talk about the amendment to the intermunicipal agreement. I know there was some discussion tonight with Martin, and I know there's some questions on the board. So as you may recall, some of you may recall, because you were here back then, but at the time that this went out for an RFP for development in the industrial park, it's owned by the City of Waterbury, but it straddles both Nogatuck and Waterbury. So we entered into an agreement, did it as a joint enterprise with the borough of Nogatuck, and we entered into an intermunicipal agreement, which also went through a public hearing the way this one did tonight, that set out the parameters for that sale, how we were going to handle the sale, the property taxes on the property once it was done, who was going to get the sale proceeds. The largest parcel, I think, was solely owned by Waterbury will get those. There was another parcel, I think, that we jointly owned, in which the proceeds will be divided up. As we moved forward, Amazon was the selected developer. As we moved to getting close to the closing, we've been having conversations with Amazon, and their concerns are, on some level, as Martin described, which is, what happens as we start going? The building is going to be one building in two different municipalities. How is that going to be handled? Amazon, and I think this is understandable, has no interest in having to deal with two electrical inspectors, two plumbing inspectors, two building inspectors. There's also the question of what happens once it's constructed, because it is in two jurisdictions, if there is a medical emergency, a fire call, or a police call. So what we've come up with is an agreement, and this amendment, so this amendment doesn't really touch what was in the original amendment, it sort of adds to it to deal with the things as we move forward. And what this basically says is that we are going to work together with Nogatuck jointly, but the city building department will take the lead on most of these things. We'll work with Nogatuck and some of their software, and we'll come to an agreement on it. If we don't come to an agreement on how the building should be built, if there's some issue that we can't agree to, then we would take that to the state building inspector to resolve the dispute, which is typical of what happens, not intermunicipal, but if within the city, if there's a dispute between the owner and the city about how something should be built, you would still go to the state building inspector. So we're following that model. Same would work with the fire inspector if there were an issue there. It also talks about what's going to happen with the police and fire departments. So the building sits in two jurisdictions, but the entryway to the building is going to be through Nogatuck. Through conversations with Nogatuck, they have agreed to take the initial police calls that will come in, so they will answer those calls as they come in, obviously, to the extent that there is any assistance that's needed, if it's a huge issue, which we don't expect to be the case very often, Waterbury would be available to back it up. When it comes to medical emergencies, actually, in Nogatuck, the police are the first responders for medical calls. The medical calls will be answered by the police department as well. If there's a fire alarm, the initial response would typically be the Nogatuck Fire Department. However, if it's a confirmed structure fire, then there will be a response from both Nogatuck and Waterbury, so that our vehicles can start getting there in a timely manner. So all of those protocols are laid out within this agreement. It continues, the original agreement said, this one makes clear as well, the property taxes, while they'll each be collected by the jurisdictions, because there's no other way to do it by state law, we will then each pay the other, so that we end up with 50% of the real property taxes, 50% of the personal... of the real property taxes, 50% of the personal property taxes, and we will also split the fees for all the building inspections. So, you know, there's, we all charge fees to do it. We'll split all of those as we go forward as well. Um, I think the final piece to this is that it also, um, it also addresses water and sewer. Uh, because of where the building's located, it's going to hook up to the Nogatuck sewer system, and they will get their water from Connecticut Water, because that's the part of the city in which our water service doesn't make it all the way down there. So that's pretty much what this lays out. Um, and then we're going to have an agreement with Amazon, not for the whole agreement, but when it comes to certain of these things, because they're relying on them as they develop it, that they would have the right to step in. If, if Waterbury and Nogatuck just kind of shrug our shoulders and say, we don't know how this is going to work, they can step in and enforce some of those provisions as well. So we're going to come into it, to an agreement with them to do that as well. So, um, with that, I don't know if you have any questions. I'd be happy to try to answer them at this point, but I just wanted to give you that overview so that you understand what's happening with all of this.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll try.
All habits thy heart. Uh, thank you for all that information, Mr. Mayor. Now, who will be handling the taxes at all, like the complete, I know we have our own tax collector, and they have their own tax collector.
So, and that, that's the one case in which Nogatuck and Waterbury will each do their own thing, so we'll collect the taxes on the property that's in Waterbury.
Okay.
Including automobiles that are parked in Waterbury. Nogatuck will collect the taxes that are in Nogatuck, including the cars that are parked in Nogatuck, and that'll split depending on how the building is. There's also going to be a really large amount of personal property there because of all this electronic equipment there. That'll get split by the towns. And then what the towns will do, and I'm just going to make up numbers because I'm not sure how this is going to play out, but if the taxes are $100, we collect 60 because more is in Waterbury, they collect 40. We're going to collect our 60, they're going to collect their 40. We'll remit 10 to Nogatuck, and we'll each get $50 out of that $100. That's the agreement that we have, so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Further questions? Alderman Zimmerman.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. What is the percentage of, are we literally split 50/50 percentage-wise on the property that is owned?
Uh, no, I'd have, you'd have to go through it. It's pretty close to 50/50.
Is it?
Right? I don't know if it's exactly 50/50.
Okay.
It might be, it's not quite 50/50 because nothing ever works that way.
Sure.
In the real world, but it's close, it's close enough.
Okay, and then when we see.
But that's, that, just for, for your edification, that's the agreement that exists today that was passed a number of years ago.
Okay. And then the entry, is that for all the trucks and such, or is that just for a civilian entry? Because I hear a lot of.
It will all be through, everything is coming through Nogatuck, right? Yes, it's all kind of come through Nogatuck. That's going to be the main entry way to the building. There may be a way to access it from the back for like, you know, emergencies and stuff, but the entry, the entrance and the address and all is going to be a Nogatuck address. You're going to come in from that side.
Okay, and then the way I'm reading the, uh, the details is that Nogatuck Fire Marshal is going to handle all of the setup for fire safety in the entire building? Is that right?
They're going to, they're going to, the fire, um, inspections, just like the electrical, plumbing, building inspectors, are going to coordinate together, um, and then the city will issue, the Waterbury will issue the permits for those.
Okay.
Okay? So we, Nogatuck didn't want to have to get two sets of permits, they wanted us to agree on who would issue the permits.
Right.
Um, so that's what we're going to do, uh, but we'll, but our building inspector won't issue them without consulting with Nogatuck, and they'll have to agree that it's appropriate to issue it. The same thing with the fire department. The fire marshal, their fire marshal coordinate together, but ultimately it'll get issued by one department.
Okay, because the way I thought I read things was that Water, um, Nogatuck was handling the fire, and then Nogatuck was handling the tax collection, processing part of it, and that kind of was just a little concerning to me.
No, because if you look at, just on the taxes, um...
Yeah.
Uh, if you look at paragraph 10, which addresses the personal property taxes, right? Uh, it talks about that each will, it shall be billed and collected in accordance with the proportionate share of the real estate improvements, personal property within development that shall be shared equally by the parties. And the city and the borough's tax collectors shall be responsible for allocating the revenue to the other party. So they're each going to collect their share, and then they'll figure out what needs to be addressed to the other party in order to get to the 50/50 split.
Okay.
There's no other way. We could do that with the building stuff, we can do it. With the taxes, because of the way state law works, we each have to collect our own taxes. There was no way to have just one entity do it and then remit the full, you know, the half amount back over. It just doesn't work under state law.
All right, so Nogatuck is going to do all of the sewer and water.
Yes.
Infrastructure build.
Yep.
Now, what happens?
Well, they'll bring the infrastructure to the build, to the building line, and then part of the project will be to bring the rest of the sewer and water lines to the building itself.
Okay.
But that'll be all because it's, it's, well, Nogatuck's going to handle the sewer, their sewer department will handle the sewer. Water will be from the Connecticut Water Department. That's who provides water to Nogatuck in that area of Waterbury. In fact, I think you have Connecticut Water. There, there's that one little corner down in the end that doesn't get Waterbury water.
And then, so if there's an issue with a water pipe.
That's their problem.
Or a main break or anything, there, we don't share the cost of fixing?
No, that would be, if it's in the, if it's, depending on how it would play out, but if it's, if it's, uh, something that the building owner is responsible for, they'd have to take care of it. If it's something that is outside of what the building owner is responsible for, it would be an issue for either Nogatuck or Waterbury, or Connecticut Water.
I'm just concerned, I want to have us have as much skin in this as possible because we're just the bigger municipality with, I feel, have more assets. So I just want to thank you for clarifying.
Sure. And we've had meetings with just, uh, the police department, the fire department, particularly the building departments have all met together, and this is the consensus of how it would work. Both sides are very comfortable with this project, especially, I was concerned about fire and police, but they're, everyone is comfortable that this is the right way to proceed with these things, so.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Alderman, Alderman Elsif.
Yes. Whose mill rate will be applied to the taxes?
Ours will be applied to everything in Waterbury, theirs will be applied, Nogatuck's to everything in Nogatuck.
And yet the net will be split?
The net will be split. Yep.
Okay.
Mayor Hess wanted to use our mill rate, but they can't do that. The taxes have to be done separately. Amazon wanted to use the Nogatuck mill rate, go figure.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes, one more question. Um, do we have a specific person working in the building department that is going to handle this, uh, project?
So, uh, the building will be handled there, but as you know, Gil Gravline retired last year, um, but he has indicated a willingness, so he's coming back. Um, Amazon is very happy with that, um, so he's going to be, and they're going to pay for him, by the way, just so that, they're going to reimburse the city. He'll work for the city because he'll be a city employee for this project. He will, his pay, though, will be reimbursed by Amazon, um, and he'll be sort of the lead person on this, which I think is going to be a great result because, uh, Gil has a lot of skill at, um, making, making sure everything is done correctly and holding people accountable, but doing it in a way that gets people to cooperate and doesn't get them really upset. So I think it's a home run that he's coming back for us on this.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Alderman Zimmerman.
I'm sorry, that leads me to just ask one more question. Do we have a point person in this city for this project? Like, the top point person that probably works with you, or is it, is it you directly?
It's, uh, it was Tommy Hyde, and, uh, it'd be Jimmy Nardozzi now through WDC.
Okay.
But everybody, there's, there's pieces all over. I mean, Mike LeBlanc, we have meetings regularly on this, so, you know, Mike LeBlanc, myself, the folks from planning, zoning, um, all of those people are part of the conversation, so.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Further questions? All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, before we recess into committees, um, item number nine, which was a placeholder, is going to be withdrawn. Uh, so item nine is withdrawn, as well as item number 11 will be withdrawn. At this time, uh, Amazon, uh, needed a little, uh, more time, a little more due diligence before they, uh, we could set the public hearing. So item nine, item 11 are withdrawn. With that, we will recess into committees, and we will start with finance.
I call the Finance Committee to order. Item number five, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following water and sewer refunds as submitted by the Board of Public Works. Edward Grenier, water and sewer adjustment, $6,568.52. Catherine Anne Velu, customer overpaid, $1,056.96. Francesca Bellini Santiago and James Bellini, water and sewer, uh, bill adjustment, $6,125.82, for a total of $13,751.30. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refunds, is read.
A second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number six, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer from the city's general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, in the amount of $255,000, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, manager of budget development and oversight. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the budget transfer.
A second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number eight, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following refunds for canceled permits as submitted by Frank Baker, acting building official, Department of Inspection. Poses on Developer LLC, electrical permit, $675. Sunrun installation, electrical permit, $405. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 12, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer from the city's capital improvement fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, in the amount of $1,500,000, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, manager of budget development and oversight. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the transfer.
A second?
Second.
Any, uh, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Our Standing Committee, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $8,188.69, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refunds, is read.
A, and a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Any abstentions? The motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned.
Okay, I call to order the Intergovernmental Committee. Starting with item number one, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a proposed new job specification of accounts payable manager, as submitted by Tara L. Shaw, Director of Human Resources. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Hello, how you doing?
Good evening. For the record, Tara Shaw, Director of Human Resources.
I'm just going to have, uh, the questions that I'm asking now are probably the other three are going to be the same. These new changes to these positions are in the budget that you put in, and those, uh, are they getting increased, or is it a different pay rate? How are we doing this?
So the positions, there's no additional position, um, change in terms of the count, the total number of positions? The three positions, um, items number one, two, and three on the agenda tonight have actually been in the budget for several years, um, I think going back at least three budget years, and they're also proposed in, um, the budget that you're looking at for fiscal year '26 as well. Um, the, I believe the increases that have taken place year over year in the budget book with these positions, uh, are a reflection of the increases from the manager's contract, so they're contractual collective bargaining increases.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any further discussion on item number one? Alderman Zimmerman.
I think so. So these aren't new positions?
These are not new positions. They are positions that have been developed over a period of time, so they've been in the budget for a number of years. However, um, we hadn't actually taken the steps to develop full job specifications for them, and so that's what you're looking at tonight, are the job specifications for these positions.
Okay. So I, I mean, I see it in the book that, in our budget book, that it's accounted for, but, so this means that we've been budgeting for this position for a number of years, but we haven't filled it?
We have not filled the position yet.
Okay. And so why do we need it now? Like, would it, I mean, you're more familiar with the department, so can you help me?
Sure. So ultimately, um, I think there's insufficient depth at supporting the higher level management positions in the Department of Finance, and this has been a, a big discussion for a period of time, just in terms of the organizational structure. We really need to have succession planning in place, um, and to support not just a, you know, a siphoned off area of the Finance Department, but some of the larger functions of it, and these positions will do that.
And this vote right now is to approve the job specification that you've submitted?
That's correct. These have gone before civil service and been approved by the Civil Service Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number one? Hearing none? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number two, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a proposed new job specification of Assistant Treasury Manager, as submitted by Tara L. Shaw, Director of Human Resources. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Zimmerman.
Sorry to make you come up again.
Thank you. Just for the record, again, for the record, Tara Shaw, Director of Human Resources.
Thank you. So is this another position that has been budgeted for, for a number of years, but we haven't filled?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the new specifications are like, so we had this job opening, we haven't filled haven't filled it, so we already had specifications, right? Are these like a revision?
We did not ever have job specifications for these, this was sort of a, a discussion about the organizational structure of the Department of Finance, it was put into the budget, I think with the intent of developing job specifications. When we went to go do that, we looked at the vacancy in the Assistant Director of Finance position, and, you know, that has been vacant for a period of time, we just filled it, thought that this was the appropriate time to go forward and really hone in on the organizational structure and develop these job specifications.
Okay, so right now, we have, we don't have an Assistant Finance Director, right?
That's incorrect, we have recently hired an Assistant Director of Finance.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you.
Any further discussion on item?
Attorney Shaw, just stay there one more second, just in case you don't make another trip.
Any further discussion on item number two? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number three, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a proposed new job specification of Accounting and Financial Systems Manager, as submitted by Tara L. Shaw, Director of Human Resources. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
I'm just struggling, like, so we're over like $300,000 worth of payroll right now, on positions that we've had empty, that we've budgeted for, but now we're making specifications. I'm just having a hard time. So what, what is this role, what is this, where does this role fit into supporting the Finance Department?
So, this role focuses on the financial computerized systems, the programs that we use, and having responsibility for the management of those programs. I know the system that we use currently, and maybe Mike can speak a little bit more to this, but it is, I believe it's not going to be supported after a certain amount of time, maybe two or three years. And so, we'll be going through an enormous upgrade, this is all of our entire financial system is on a loss and system, so it will be undergoing a big change over the next couple of years.
Okay, I mean, you might find different feedback after, when we're talking about budget, but right now, I'm voting to approve the specification. Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's correct.
That's what I'm going to do, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number three? Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, go ahead, if you want, that's fine.
Uh, thank you, I'm the liaison to the civil service, so I was at, commission, so I was at the meetings. I think it's, Tara just explained it very well, but I think it's necessary also to state that all these proposed new job specifications are also looking at the new requirements for those positions. So this is sort of growing into a different, you know, I would say more, more updated, as far as what the job actually requires from the position, so that when we start looking at employment opportunities and posting these jobs, we actually get the people that fit what we're looking for. Another fact that should be mentioned is we're modernizing the, the office, so some of these positions that are not necessarily have staff in place, what we did is, we added these new job descriptions so that we end up hiring the right, the right people, that's really what it's all about. Thank you, thank you for recognizing.
Any further discussion on item number three? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number four, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the 2024 Emergency Management Performance Grant from FEMA administered by the State Department of Emergency and Homeland Security, in the amount of $57,508. This grant is a zero-cost item, no matching funds are necessary, as submitted by Adam S. Rinco, Director of Emergency Management, Executive Officer of the Waterbury Fire Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez?
Good evening, Adam Rinco, Fire Department.
How you doing? Thank you for coming. I'm looking at right here, and the word says, the total project cost is 126,517.80.
So it's a, it's a reimbursement pass through through the state, so in order to, they will reimburse up to 50% of emergency management costs, and so essentially whenever there's anything that's related to emergency management, we send the state a bill under this grant. It, it's kind of mislabeled as a grant and more of an entitlement pass through, so whenever we have those activities over the year, we log those hours, we take those hours, and we submit actual hours loaded with fringe benefit.
Okay, so all this money is going to be used for?
We exceed it every year.
Okay.
So it's just, it's just, it's just, it's recouping funds that we would normally not be paid back for.
Got it, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Any further discussion on item number four? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number nine has been withdrawn. Item number 10, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve an engineering services agreement for Waterbury Downtown Traffic Signal Upgrade, State Project Number 151-325, between the City of Waterbury and, and VN Engineering Inc., in the amount of $77,309.87, as submitted by Roy E. Kavanaugh, PE, City Engineer. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 11 has been withdrawn. Moving on to unfinished business, item number one, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the First Amendment to the Intermunicipal Agreement between the City of Waterbury and the Town of Noggettuck for development of properties in Noggettuck and Waterbury, as submitted by Paul K. Peranuski Jr., Mayor, City of Waterbury. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Intergovernmental Committee. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay, with that, we'll return to the regular order of business, the following items are on the consent calendars, items one and two are on consent to approve. Items three, four, five, and six are on consent to approve, item number seven is received and placed on file, item eight is on consent to approve, item nine has been withdrawn, item 10 is on consent to approve, item 11 has been withdrawn, and item 12 is on consent to approve.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, the motion carries and the consent calendar is approved with
respect to standing, the chair would recognize Alderman Michael Savio, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills, in the amount of $8,188.69, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dorso, seconded by Alderman Mosley, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the refunds, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, the motion carries and the refunds are approved. On your desks, you have the schedule, I'm just going to read the minutes of the schedules, not each department, so Thursday, please keep these dates open, Thursday, Tuesday, excuse me, Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, at 5:30 will be our first meeting with the department heads, Tuesday, April 22nd, at 5:30, and Wednesday, April 30th, at, at 5:30 also, so Tuesday, April 15th, Tuesday, April 22nd, Wednesday, April 30th will be our meetings with department heads, budget questions, we're going to concentrate on the budget, and all questions should be directed to the department heads for the budget, you have your backup documents, the meetings will be noticed and you'll be sent more info on those. With that, is there anything for the good of the order? Alderman Mosley?
Yes, thank you for recognition, Mr. President, just want to recognize and salute, we've had two parishes in our city that have celebrated milestone anniversaries, recently Mount Olive Amy's Zion Church celebrated 146 years in our city, it's the oldest African-American institution in Waterbury, also yesterday Grace Baptist Church of Waterbury celebrated 125 years, so we're just thankful for those churches and those parishes in our community, and our vibrant faith-based community here in the city of Waterbury.
Thank you, anything else? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
The Arts and Tourism Commission is offering scholarships, so we're looking for our youth to be applying to scholarships, I can work with the mayor's office to get a link up on maybe social media, so they can apply, but there is a $500 scholarship, there's four of them that are available, so.
You're looking for the mayor's office to put a link, is that what you said?
I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to send it to them, so that way, and request that if they.
You'll, you'll take care of it?
I can do that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If that's okay, thank you.
Anything else? Alderman Alsuff?
Yes, my regular meeting request to get some information on St. Mary's Sacred Heart properties and the tax-exempt properties. I'd like to just say that I think the next step is, if I can't get them here, I'll have to go to Freedom of Information people and push this as hard as I can, because it's getting a little ridiculous that we're not getting any answers here.
Yeah, the, uh.
My patience is not known to be part of my reputation, and I think I've been more than patient.
Yep, and the, I know we're working on the properties that are tax exempt in the city, I know that's supposed to be getting done for you, obviously Sacred Heart is a work in progress still, and St. Mary's, there are, there is some action on St. Mary's, and we are waiting, and we will update you as soon as we get some information on St. Mary's definitely, so.
I'd like to just refer back to the letters that I sent to the Board of Alderman, and a request as to, for the information that I was looking for, so that anybody who has any questions about what I'm looking for, the questions are right there.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd appreciate getting some answers soon.
No problem, thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, Alderman Dorso.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded, we are adjourned.